Tomorrow. Let's do it!
Yes!
Alright! Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
And now I want to call on the executive director of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance, maybe decide to come up and get things moving.
Brothers and sisters, stop the greed, regulate Wall Street! Stop the greed, regulate Wall Street! Stop the greed! Stop the greed! Stop the greed!
Regulate Wall Street!
Brothers and sisters, we stand here with a very heavy heart, but we have a lot of fire in our belly. We are sick and tired of having to plan funerals for our fallen brothers. Five suicides in five months. There is an absolute crisis, a deepening crisis in the city of New York. These are hard-working men and women who every day collectively serve a million people. There are a million people in the city of New York that depend on yellow cab, green cab, livery, black car drivers to get to where they need to get to safely. Long before Uber and Lyft came into town, the drivers in this city were still serving a million people. And what we want to know is, how dare this city forget the hard work of the men and women who made New York City a 24-hour town? How dare this city treat drivers like drivers are expendable? We know that the business model of Uber and Lyft across the globe, it is causing misery. There have been driver suicides also in India. Last year, drivers working for Uber and Ola, which has the same business model, went out on strike for days because, to protest a driver brother who had committed suicide. We know that from our friends and brothers in San Francisco that there has been a rise of drivers dying in their cabs while they're at the airport taxi lot. In places like Philadelphia, there are just hundreds of driver families moving out of town overnight. This is a disaster. This is a disaster. What was once a full-time solid job is now being turned into poverty pay gig. There is a human cost to this business model. And that human cost is coming to families that are suffering a deeper sense of hunger and insecurity about paying the rent, having to make choices about the education opportunities of their children, families working longer shifts. How many owner-driver families are splitting their shifts today? Where the husband or the wife drives one shift and the husband or the wife drives the other shift? This is no way to build an economy. It's no way to build this city. New York City is one of the wealthiest cities across this globe. It now leads in income inequality. New York State leads in income inequality across this country. This is a shame. This is a shame. We have a city council that is majority Democrat. We have a mayor and a governor who all claim to be Democrat and progressive. We have a city council and gubernatorial state-city level leadership that across the country is seen as one of the most progressive. Why have they fallen silent in the face of Wall Street? Where is their progressivism when it comes to regulating Wall Street and protecting the workers? Make no mistake that the human crisis you see today is a result of political failure. For five years, companies like Uber and Lyft have been able to operate completely unfettered. Very little regulation. A taxi driver, an owner-driver who owns the medallion and the vehicle contributes more to the MTA than Uber Technologies does. That driver has more monthly expenses than Uber Technology does. A leased driver in the yellow cab industry that leases from the garage on a daily basis contributes more to the MTA than these companies. Yet, they just spent the final weeks of Albany lobbying for a bill where in congestion pricing they would have an advantage over yellow cabs. They've managed to turn what was supposed to be a program to support mass transit into a cash cow for themselves. And they've done it because companies like Uber and Lyft in 2016 combined to spend more on lobbyists than Amazon, Walmart, and Microsoft combined. Across the country, these companies rank in the top companies of lobbying expenditures. That is why they have been able to decimate the taxi industry across the country. That is why they've been able to take a full-time job and turn it into a part-time gig. Well, we are here to say that the drivers are organized. We're fighting back. We're united. We know that we don't have the money to fight these people, but we've got the righteousness of our cause and we've got the unity of the people. And we know that we can't afford to slow down. You know, people with money, they end up inside City Hall. People like us, our fight, it starts on the streets and it stays on the streets. Because we understand that in order for our voices to travel, we need the support and solidarity of the good conscience of our fellow New Yorkers to echo our fight for fairness. And that's all we're asking for. Our demands are so basic. All we're asking for is a cap on the number of vehicles. You now have over 130,000 vehicles. They're not doing any more fares than what 60,000 total vehicles were doing just five years ago. You have 130,000 cars all clogging the streets in desperation in search of limited fares. We want a cap on the number of cars. We know Uber spent $10 million two and a half years ago to stop the mayor and the city council. We know the governor intervened at the last minute. And as a result of that political failure, we now have a saturation where tens of thousands of workers, even after working 10, 12, 14-hour shifts, are talking about hunger and poverty. And that's not acceptable. We want a cap on the number of vehicles. We want the metered fare to be regulated across the industry. Uber and Lyft and all these companies, they use a virtual fare. They advertise one set of rates by which they claim they pay the driver, and those are lower rates. And then to the public, they allow the public to be charged what's called upfront pricing, a base fare. That upfront pricing fare is higher on average than the metered fare by which they use to calculate pay to the driver. And the fare which they use to publicize to claim that they have low rates. The metered fare is the only source of income for drivers across this industry. For 30 years, we have had the number of vehicles, the rate of fare, and the expenses for the drivers capped. As a result of these three regulations, we've been able to build through our organizing, where we have fought for these regulations, we've been able to build a solid job that can support families through full-time work. 30 years ago, taxi drivers, at that time it was only yellow cab drivers, and it was the beginning of the livery sector and the beginning of the black car sector. At that time, the industry went from commission employment into present-day leasing. Drivers became independent contractors and overnight they lost all of their rights. And many people thought, well, it's only a bunch of cab drivers. Well, 30 years later, over 30% of the economy is dominated by workers in a similar precarious situation. In fact, the companies of today, Uber and Lyft, use their lobbying might not only to deregulate themselves from taxi rules, but also to deregulate themselves from labor law. In more than half the states across this country, they have one state legislation that says that no matter the level of control they have over the worker, if the company dispatches the work through an app, then the company doesn't have to abide by the state's labor laws. That is a shame! Shame on these state legislatures that have been bought out. Shame on these companies that are using, in the name of technology, they're destroying labor standards for hundreds of thousands of workers across this country. And this is how it starts. 30 years ago, it started with yellow cab drivers. Today, again, it's starting with drivers. And if we don't stop the gig economy and properly regulate it, there will be no more full-time work for hundreds and thousands of masses of workers. If we don't stop the gig economy and properly regulate it, basic labor protections like minimum wage and overtime pay and your right to a union and a voice on the job will fall to the wayside for hundreds of thousands of workers across our country, across our economy. We know that this is a historic fight. We've been down this road before. But 30 years ago, when the drivers fought, the union at the time sold them out. But today, we as a union, as a movement, as an organization, we stand united, we stand determined, and we stand committed to fighting Wall Street's greed and ensuring that the livelihoods and the lives of working people are protected. I have to tell you, in all our years of organizing, we have never seen this level of desperation. And what is so infuriating is that it's politically manufactured. It's a result of these companies not being regulated and these companies using their political might to remain unregulated. That is why we see an economic devastation for the drivers. No driver family should have to wonder in the middle of the night when they haven't heard from their loved one that have they taken an act of desperation? No driver family should have to go through that anxiety and that heartache. Years ago, when we would hear that a brother or sister hadn't gotten home safely, we would wonder if they'd been assaulted on the job. Because drivers are 30 times more likely to be killed on this job than other workers. We know that it's a high-risk profession. But today, because of economic desperation, we have to wonder about suicide. And that's unacceptable. It's unconscionable. After Douglas Shifter, on February 5th, shot himself on the other side of City Hall, right across those gates, we were first told there was a mental health issue. And then after we started organizing, we were told that we were being heard. And a number of council members introduced legislation. The mayor came out and had said he believed both in the cap and in other regulations. Even the governor had to admit that with 130,000 cars on the road, that it was a no-brainer that we needed a cap on the vehicles. And, but where is the action? It's now been three months. And since we heard those months, since we heard those promises and those words, two more drivers committed suicide. How much more heartache, how much more loss are we as a workforce supposed to suffer before our humanity gets recognized? Before our families are given a sense of peace and comfort? You know? All the years that we've been organizing, we've never had to come to the streets with such a sense of grief and sorrow. And we say to you that we will keep coming out here until our voices are heard. We want a cap on the vehicles. We want the regulated taxi meter to be the minimum fare across this industry. We want that fare rate to go up so all drivers can have a raise. We want the vehicle financing, which is choking app-based drivers. We want it to be regulated, just like it's regulated on the yellow cab side. We want a program for owner-drivers who have on average $6,000 worth of monthly operating expenses. Many of them are in their 60s and 70s and they're back out to working on their own 10, 12, sometimes 14-hour shifts. It's unconscionable. We want the city council to form a committee to look at congestion pricing so it's not on the backs of the drivers. Because whatever the city council does today, and it must act today, we don't want to see it wiped out in January when an unfair congestion pricing program, that's basically an anti-competitive program, gets unleashed on the streets and drivers suffer through another stage of crisis after just a few months of possible recovery. We need comprehensive action. And we know that there's amnesia in politics. We get that there's a lot of voices that are shouting. You know, we know that economic inequality across our city and state. We know the attacks on immigrants, the attacks on Muslim communities. We know that all of these different issues, you know, the attacks on black men and women through police violence. These are issues that are deeply seated in our city and they all need to be addressed. And we stand together as a community because drivers aren't just part of one community. Drivers come from over 100 different countries. We collectively speak over 100 different languages. We are one of the largest Muslim and Sikh workforces in this entire country. We're 94% immigrant. Drivers face issues on the pure human level in our communities, in the schools, in the streets, like all other communities across this city. But at the end of the day, for a working man and a working woman, it all begins at the job and it all ends at the job. Because if you can't make ends meet after a 12-hour shift, what are you supposed to do with your desperation? Something needs to give, and it can't continue to be the drivers. It can't continue to be the drivers and driver families. What we're asking for is basic. The city council needs to act now.
Action! Action!
We need action! We need action now! Now! We need action now! Now! We need action now! Now! We need action now! Now!
Brothers and sisters, before I introduce our next speaker, I want to hear all of you from the back shout as loud as you can. When I say "stop the greed", you say "regulate Wall Street". Stop the greed! 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 Respect the drivers! 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 Brothers and sisters, before I introduce the next speaker, I want all of you to know across this protest line, inside City Hall, across this street at 250 Broadway, that standing with us today is one of our most honorable heroes, Brother Richard Chow, who is the brother of Kenny Chow. This is such a noble family who in their moments of grief has continued to remember the brothers and sisters who drove alongside of Kenny for the past 10 years of his life. They've taken a personal grief, brought it out into the public, so we can say once and for all, "No more!" No more! No more! No more! No more! No more! No more! Action now! Action now! Action now! Action now! I would like to call upon Brother Richard Chow to say a few words.
Yeah, I'm Richard Chow. I'm a brother of Kenny. Kenny is as a husband, a father, son, brother, friend, was just like many New Yorkers. He's immigrant with a dream who unconditionally love his family. He work hard very everyday. Kenny is in face finance and other hardship he was not able to control. And we are asking to help for the family left Kenny left behind. Kenny left behind the family that loved him, counted on him, and hardship remain to be solved. The finance trust directly cases by the yellow cab business of Kenny worked tirelessly for the last 10 years indirectly. Case of other hardship of Kenny and his family. Kenny is a determined and a loving person memorial of remain with us. Kenny survived spouse fight past, staple cancer. And Kenny daughter pursue her college degree with two year remaining. Kenny was a so winner of the family and the Chow family with get back on her feet. And we more the loves Kenny Chow. The fundraising for Kenny Chow family and the whole world that have available any offers is time and my imaginable hardship. The Chow family with forever grateful for to have for able to provide. Thank you God bless Kenny and his family. So, any want to donate to the, for the Kenny, go to login the kenny@chow.com. Remembering the nyckabychow.com please. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I would like to call upon one more speaker. Um, thank you, Richard. Want to call upon the person that I know who has been driving the longest in the streets of New York City. One of my heroes, Beres Ford Simmons. Driver for over 50 years.
Make me seem so old. Wow. Congratulations to you guys who have taken off a day to come here and voice your opinion. My name is Beres Ford Simmons. I've been driving a taxi in New York City for over 46 years, going on 50 years. Maybe more, but I'm embarrassed to say. This is the saddest time I've seen in my 40-something years driving a cab, where cab drivers are actually committing suicide. These are men with family. And when it gets this bad, something has to be done. I'm gonna call on the guys on top. From Albany to the mayor's office to the city council. Third, the other parties are the brokers, the medallion managers, the credit unions, all these guys who are involved in this industry economically and were holding back on the drivers. Drivers are killing themselves. Have a little mercy on these guys. Put some money back into this industry. You have taken all the money. The city made a lot of money from the medallion. It went up to a million point three. Okay? Where is all this money? It started with a friend of ours who used to be the mayor of this city, is now in Washington, the lawyer for the president of this country. He made a lot of money from it. He has, the president lawyer has quite a few medallions out there. And drivers are going bankrupt. I asked these guys to put some more money back into the business. Uber and all of these app companies are putting money into their business.
Are you working the press?
We need help, okay? There are too many cars in the streets. We are getting summonses left and right. Petty summons like a seatbelt. I have to go, I do 20 trips a day and I have to release my seatbelt 20 trips to go in my pocket to make change to the customers. Come on. You're making enough money from the cab drivers of this city, so help us out. And I'm not begging, I'm demanding that you guys come to our aid and stop the hoarding of the medallions and stop the holding back of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beres. Driver power! Driver power! Driver power! We have very simple demands. Cap the number of cars, make the taxi meter the floor. Nobody can charge below that. Give the owner-drivers a support program so that they don't go into further financial ruin. We have all these demands. They are simple, they are basic, and they must come soon. The next speaker up is a person who's been championing some of the reform. Council member Ruben Diaz.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, the new speaker of the city council, the Honorable Corey Johnson, he created a committee, a new committee, special committee to deal with the four higher vehicles. And he appointed me to be the chairperson of that committee. We have met and we have an agenda. I have confronted some problems and we have seen some tragedies. For example, I have the names. They have the names of five drivers that had lost their life or taken their life. Danilo Corporan, a livery driver. Alfredo Perez, a livery driver from the Bronx. Nick Anor Ochizo, a Queens, a yellow cab from Queens. Yume Kenny Joe, Queens yellow cab. Doug Schiffer. And, and, and we have... Yeah, and we have a problem. We have, we have been confronted a problem. The city of New York, the city council has allowed the industry and Uber to spend and to run the city of New York without regulation. For example, let me tell you what I, something. In 2011... For example, let me tell you what I, something, in 2011, in 2011, there were four hundred and eight, four hundred eighty-two, eight hundred eleven daily rides, an average of daily rides. Seven years later, in 2018, that came down, decreased by, by half, to two hundred, two hundred eighty, two thousand five hundred sixty-five, meaning that in two, in 2011, there were over four hundred eighty-two average rides, secure rides for the taxi industry. Seven years later, in 2018, that decreased to two hundred and eighty-two. But, on the contrary, in 2011, there were thirty-nine thousand for higher vehicle, twenty, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eight for higher vehicle in 2011. When there was high ride, there were thirty-nine thousand for higher vehicle. Seven years later, in 2018, the rise decreased, and the car, the vehicle increased to two, to one hundred, two thousand vehicle. So, it made no sense, it made no sense that in 2011, there were rides, and little, and, and, and not too many cars, seven years later, in 2018, the rise decreases, and the cars increases. So, there is something wrong, that we have to deal with it, we have to, uh, my bill, have a bill that I is calling for Uber to be regulated. Uber already have more than seventy thousand vehicle in the, in the, in the, in the street, affecting the industry, and no regulation. So, ladies and gentlemen, taxi drivers, the families of those taxi drivers that have lost their lives, some of them are here, please, I send my sympathy, and I assure you that my committee, the city council member, and the city council president, uh, Corey Johnson, is willing, and they are supporting me, and supporting the committee, and soon, soon you will hear something very, very important, and very, very good for the effort. God bless you all, God bless you all, and continue the fight.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, drivers, united, you never be defeated! Hey, hey, the drivers, united, you never be defeated! The workers, united, you never be defeated! Brothers and sisters, there is a city councilman, Ruben Diaz, he came over here, and solidarity, and is standing all of you. It is cross the board for all driver, how we can survive, and he shares some of the news, very good news. You see, when you stand together, they come out, they talk, and they listen, and they bring this bill to this city hall. This is the city hall. But anyway, we need to be fight, we have more fight to do, the bill is not there yet. Last three month, when there is a brother who suicide next to this other side of the door, after that, we lose two brother, two brother, and we are not, and yet, I deal with this bill pass.
Thank you for the tip, thank you council member Diaz. Let's get, let's not forget that the fight is going to go on till we get all the bills through. Let's not forget that, let's keep pushing, let's raise a simple slogan. One license, one meter. One license!
One meter!
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 Driver power! Driver power! Now I want to call on Brother Abraham Loeb, who's been an Uber driver, who struggled on the streets of New York City, to come up and say a few words.
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
No!
What do we want it?
No!
When do we want it?
No!
I want to thank all the speakers, especially Mr. Beravi, who has been fighting for driver for the past twenty years. I want to thank council member Ruben Diaz, for supporting the driver and this be. Uh, I want to buy a few second of salas for one of driver who fell and committed suicide. I was shocked to understand that one more driver has fallen. We thank you for coming today to support this rally. I have one more thing, one simple thing to say. This industry has a predatory lending system. I have in my hand, a copy of the case that was settled from the district court in San Francisco, where Uber and Lyft, special Uber, admitted that they are engaged in predatory lending practices, the same, same type, misleading advertisement, cheating on drivers on their taxis. I have a thirteen page copy, that has endangered Uber in the federal court. What we need to do is to enforce already the laws of the land. Uber was found guilty. Today, we want the council to pass law that are already in the books, and enforce them, because Uber not only is destroying lives, lives have been killed, I was supposed to be one of those driver who committed suicide. Maybe because I'm strong, or not, I'm weak, it's because at one point, I didn't believe in God. As a pastor, I refuse to succumb, but many of our fellow brethren are getting their life taken away from them, and far many life that who been cut away from them, it's time for us to say, regulate this industry, regulate the predatory lending that's Uber, revoke their license, and suspend them. God bless you. No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
One meter, one license, one license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
Okay, next up is one of the New York City's largest unions, Thirty-two B J, one of its key members, Mr. Kyle, he's here to give us solidarity and support to all the taxi drivers, four higher vehicle drivers, Uber drivers, green cap drivers, yellow drivers on the streets of New York, who are struggling every day. Kyle!
Thank you, my brother. Good afternoon, brothers and sisters and fellow New Yorkers. Again, I'm Kyle Bragg, and I'm Secretary Treasurer of S C I U Thirty-two B J, and I stand here because our membership and our leadership stands together in unity with the drivers for fairness, equity, and for respect, and for justice. The last time we were here down at City Hall, to talk about the situation with cab drivers in the city, we were mourning the death of Doug Shifter, who took his own life because of the stress of the work under the current conditions of drivers in New York. Now we're back here after the death of Yumay Kenny Chow. He is the fifth driver in the city to take his life in five months. Thus five too many lost to a cruel unusual situation, we need to and can fix. Remember their names, we must remember their names. Danilo Corporan Castillo, Alfredo Perez, Nikano Ochizo, Doug Shifter, and Yumay Chow. We will not stand by while services like Uber and Lyft want to turn the race to the bottom into business as usual. We stand with our brothers and sisters who are organizing to reverse this crisis that drivers are under in this city. We know that the city council wants to take action, and move on legislation to protect drivers like Kenny, Doug, Nikano, Alfredo, and Danilo, and so we're here to support and encourage them to do so with the most deliberate speed as they can, and to provide the strongest protection possible to workers provide vital services to so many people in the city of New York. We need to increase fairness, drivers need an industry-wide wage floor to secure their income, protection against wage theft, and the caps on drivers expenses. Drivers also need regulation that help them not to have, to be pitted against each other, or to compete for enough fares to have a livable income. Right now, people are forced to work longer and longer hours in order to make ends meet. This ride company say that that's how the market works, and that's just the way things are. We don't believe that. We believe that drivers need a livable wage, human working conditions, and it's time for city council to help them achieve it. That's why we stand here together, that's why we stand in unity, and that's why the hundred sixty-five thousand members of Thirty-two B J support our drivers. Thank you.
Kyle Bragg, Secretary Treasurer Thirty-two B J, representing a hundred and sixty-five thousand workers of New York City. Driver power! Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
And now, brothers and sisters, Mamadul Haq, one of the co-founders of the Taxi Workers Alliance, and leader in the community board in Kensington, Brooklyn.
Thank you. Brothers and sister, my fellow drivers, fellow New Yorkers, and my fellow comrades. I'm in and out, uh, in this industry, last sixteen years, I was a full-time taxi cab driver, and co-founded the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. And after that, I worked hard time, once a, a week sometimes, but I haven't seen that kind of devastation. For the drivers, the sorrow, sad in their face, I haven't seen that, honestly, I'm telling you the truth. We are organizing driver last twenty years. We have done lots of rallying in New York City, demonstration for the rights, respect, and dignity, and a better income for the taxi drivers and their families. But now, it is very sad for all of us, for New Yorkers, when we see the drivers are committing suicide. My prayer, thoughts and prayer goes to their family and children. We're not gonna bring them back, but we can do for some other, the rest of the drivers. So who are the responsible people? The five drivers committed suicide, who are the responsible? Who did that? I am blaming the city council, the council members, the mayor of New York City, the Bloomberg, and the governor of New York State. They are the full responsible for their death. I know most of the city council members, a lot of them is my very close friend, I work with them closely, but I don't understand, they are, they called progressive, it's make crazy. I mean, progressive leaders and democratic leaders, how come they can go against the workers, against the driver? It can be happen. Democratic people, progressive leader cannot go against the workers, against the drivers, and they are, they should bring this cap long time ago. If they bring this cap for the app business, we shouldn't see these days today here, because of them, we lost those drivers, we don't want to see it again. I hope they will bring this legislation clearly, and respect the drivers, bring the city normal. We don't want to see any more dead, we don't want to bring any dead body in front of City Hall. It is my talk from this place today, please, take action, take action, regulate this industry, regulate these app companies. The meter has to be floor for all the drivers, they're all drivers, Uber driver, cab drivers, green cap drivers, they're all drivers, the meter has to be the floor for all drivers. So please, take action, take action, bring a good legislation for the drivers, and, and resolve this problem. We don't want to, uh, do rally in front of the City Hall all the time. And I know you guys are doing politics, politics, put aside politics, and think about people's lie. We don't want to see any more lives lost, just remember that, please, please, please. I hope my loud voice goes to your clearly. Thank you so much for your solidarity, brothers and sister. I know it's a hot day, and most of my fellow drivers are fasting, I'm too, I mean, but we don't have any choice, but they came over here, and I'm thanking all of you, and congratulate that you took time off from your works, and you know, this hot day, you came over here to support your, uh, brothers and sisters and their family. Thank you so much, God bless you all, God bless the New York City.
Right now, I want to introduce Benson Wong, is a Kenny Chow's lawyer.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here today to give Kenny Chow a voice, because Mr. Chow did not have a voice. I'm here today on the behalf of Mr. Chow and his family, Richard, his coworkers over here, all the drivers of New York City. Mr. Chow unfortunately suffered at the hands of this situation. I'm not here to blame anyone, but I'm here, I'm here with the family to raise awareness, not only for Mr. Chow, for Mr. Castillo, Mr. Perez, Mr. Shifter, Mr. Ochizo, and lastly, Kenny Chow. It really is unfortunate, and we are urging the leaders of this city to really consider what the union is asking for, the nine points that the union is asking for. That is to really put a cap, so that the people of New York City, the drivers of New York City, would have a chance to make a living. We, we understand, and we embrace technology, but the politicians, really, the politicians has a duty, to all of us standing on the sidewalk today, to give people like Kenny Chow, a chance to dream and pursue their dreams. We really thank you for listening, and please, when you have a moment, to go to our website in remembering Kenny Chow. We have formed a fund that says, "We will remember you, Kenny Chow, we'll always love you, for your hard work, for your representation of New York City, through your hard work, and for your commitment to the industry, we will never forgive you, forget you, rather." And it is through this fund that we have established, Kabbie, C-A-B-B-I-E, Chow, C-H-O-W, Fund, F-U-N-D. Please, consider looking at our fundraising efforts, and if you can, if you can, help us and help all of us. The fund is not only for Kenny Chow and his family, but for all of us. Thank you very much.
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
And now, brothers and sisters, I want to call one more of the organizations that has extended continuous solidarity to all the drivers of New York City, Arlene from Nycash.
Thank you. When we think about New York City, the image of a taxi is what most of us see. Taxi workers like all of you build the heart and are the heart of this city, with your hard work and dedication. We have companies like Uber and Lyft, who are multi-billion dollar institutions, and they're taking advantage of New York City's hard workers, like Jeff Bezos of Amazon, who have so much money, they ask, "What charity can I donate to?", instead of taking care of their hardworking people who are employed at their institutions. These billionaires need to do a simple task, they need to pay workers a living wage, stop exploiting drivers, and stop... and stop misclassifying workers so that they can access simple benefits. The issue of stress of not having job security has led to an epidemic of depression and suicides among drivers all over the world. Drivers who are worried if they will have access to their basic rights, the basic right to earn a living and the right to survive. Uber and Lyft have taken away these rights, or they've tried to. They've tried to make it impossible to compete. It's time for New Yorkers to celebrate the industry that makes New York what it is today, an industry led by unions, led by workers, and led by immigrants who make up all of the people at this rally. At Nychash, we stand with you to call on New York City to better regulate a rogue industry and to support the vision of this city as a home of labor and of all workers. This was our vision of New York City, that New York City is built by labor unions, it's built by hardworking people, and it's built by taxi drivers like all of you. We're here with you as taxi workers, but also with all workers who know that the gig economy is threatening to decimate good jobs everywhere so that billionaires can continue to pocket workers' money. This Uber economy has to stop and it has to stop with the legislation that the Taxi Workers Alliance is supporting and it has to stop with all of you here. So thank you. We offer our full support and solidarity.
Yes! Yes! Hey, hey, ho, ho, worker, you need to be united. Right now, I want to introduce one of the very big working force in the fast food restaurant workers. You see all the fast food? They are working very poorly, very poor condition. In 2012, in America, the biggest, largest strike happened by this organization. Right now, I want to introduce Ashley from Fast Food Justice.
Hi, my name is Ashley and I'm a member of Fast Food Justice. I am here today to stand in solidarity with New York Taxi Workers Alliance and taxi drivers across the city. Over the weekend, while many were spending time with families, with family members, others were mourning. The New York Times reported another driver in debt apparently took his life. That's five drivers in five months. I too know the struggle of trying to make ends meet working in the fast food industry characterized by chaotic working conditions. I hear about drivers sleeping in their cars. I hear about coworkers in fast food living in homeless shelters. This is unacceptable. Through organization and legislation, fast food workers like myself are improving our lives. For over 20 years, professional drivers, overwhelmingly immigrants and people of color, have come together and created a staple family-supporting profession through their activism. But now, these hard fought for improvements are being stripped away and drivers in the city are being driven to despair. We support further regulating app communities, companies, like Uber and Lyft, so taxi drivers have fair chance at making decent living. Fast food workers stand in solidarity with taxi drivers as they advocate for legislation that will improve their industry and their lives. The city should stand with taxi workers and enact the policies they are here fighting for today.
The workers, united, you never be defeated. The workers, united, you never be defeated. The workers, united, you never be defeated. Brother and sister, we are standing middle of the triangle. The mayor office right there. The counselor sitting right in the air condition. But we are the human being fighting for our rights on the sunlight right in that there. In my back, there is a killing machine, Wall Street. So we are standing triangle. And two of them, we have a left, right side and the left side. They will pass your bail. Remember, the fight is not over. It is a fight corporate greed. It is a fight gig economy. It is a fight economic injustice. It is a fight to open the eyes of the City Council and the legislator. Right now, I want to introduce our brother, Indar Palmer. He is a Uber driver. You want to share how much suffering under the Uber run policy?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Indar Palmer, I-N-D-E-R, Indar, last name is Palmer. I'm driving Uber since 2013. But Uber is, last time I saw in the mirror, I'm a human being. But Uber is treating us like a commodity. The more the drivers are, the less the money they should pay. We should pay, used to pay 20%. Now they are taking 42% commission. I went to the office, they said, "We have expenses." I said, "What about the driver expenses?" Our cars are there, our gas is there, our repairs is there. And we want to send our kids to the college. They do not have an answer. It used to be $2.60 a mile, now it's $1.25 a mile, okay? They have reduced the driver's income by 50% and they have increased their commission by 100%. This is exploitation. We want TLC in New York City to match the price. The yellow cap price should be the best price for everybody. This way, we can make a decent living, we can give good food and shelter to our kids. Thanks for everybody to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Palmer, boy. Thank you so much. And remember what Indar just said. We want the taxi meter to be the floor. Nobody, nobody in New York City should be allowed to charge below that rate. That is how we ensure that every driver takes back money to put food on the table for his family. One meter, one license, one license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
One license!
One meter!
There's one voice in the middle of all this. We've heard from yellow drivers, we've heard from Uber drivers, we've heard from black car drivers. There's one voice that I need to bring into the middle of this. Nancy Reynoso from the green cab activist sector. Nancy, please come up.
Hello, everyone. Thanks, everybody, for being here. And thanks, New York Taxi Workers Alliance, for leading this fight, which we, the green taxi community, are standing with you. Five years ago, New York City also made a big deal with us. We became the auto-borrow taxis of New York. Uber has come to destroy that dream also, just like the ones of our yellow taxi drivers. We ask City Council to act right now and regulate Uber and all those app companies. It's been a disaster. Our green taxis have gone in decline in numbers. Our wave of vehicles have been totally abandoned, which is such a big need for our disabled community, all because of Uber. We have stopped this greed, let's get all together and hopefully, City Council come here and we shouldn't have one more death in the hands of City Council. We need respect and we need justice.
Brothers and sister, does this last five-month continued protest in front of the City Hall? There are so many people sitting inside there. They're seeing people dying. They're seeing people getting homeless. They're seeing that we cannot take our food and our family. They're seeing we getting homeless. Brother, this is their time and we got to have our time too. This is time very limit. We need to be past this bell as soon as possible. And it is just simple. One meter, one rate. Cap the car. Regulate Wall Street greedy company like Uber, Lyft, all app base. It should be regulated as like a yellow, which no one can go below the floor. It is a simple. They can say, "Yes, 51 people are sitting here on there. They have a coffee, they have a air condition, they're listening on the same thing. People dying on the street, on the East River, next to the mayor house, next to the mayor office." What else they want to see, brother and sister? We want justice right now. We want justice. We want justice. We want justice.
We want justice!
We want!
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 Justice!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power!
Union power!
Driver power! All right, brothers and sisters, remember, we are here to mark what I'm calling Day Zero. They have started working on the bills. Now we got to ensure that the language that gives absolutely clear justice to all taxi drivers is part of those bills. Today is Day Zero. We are not giving them more than two weeks. Otherwise, every two weeks, every 10 days, every week, we'll be back here protesting, storming, calling for justice till they cannot sleep. We'll make it impossible for them to leave peaceful lives as long as they don't allow us to leave peaceful lives. United! United we stand. Unite, unity, unity. Okay, to bring us to a close, we have none other than Councilmember Jomani Williams here to share his words with us.
What's up? How you doing? I know you're not doing too well at this moment in time. My name is Jomani Williams. I'm a council member from Brooklyn, New York. I just wanted to make sure I came out here to support you. As you've been told, transportation has been a finicky thing going from way back. I come from the auto-borrow, so I know that. I want to be honest about that. But I also want to be honest because I believe we failed you. Failed drivers in this city when they allowed people to pay mortgages for their medallions and then allowed another industry to come in with no regulations. And so I just believe it's time for us to step up, to say we sorry, we missed it, come in and fix it because people are now dying. People are taking their lives. And if this was any other industry, it wouldn't be ignored in the way it's being ignored right now. And those lives have meaning. They're people's fathers and brothers and sons. All they want to do is work hard for a day and get paid a day's work and pay their bills. We have now got to step up. I want to remember these folks' names. It is haunting whenever I see it in the paper. Government has a duty, a right, to step in and regulate all industries equally. We should not be providing any one industry an upper hand. We just want to make sure everybody has an even playing field and I'm going to be there, in there, fighting for that. I supported the bill when it came out before. I wish we had made it through. I'm supporting one that's here now and I thank Councilmember Diaz, the chair, for pushing. I will be there supporting. Peace, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We are very end of our time today, but we are on the street. Right around here, yellow cab, Uber, Lyft, cab, a surrounding mayor office, a surrounding 250 Broadway. They know if we come down right in here, the world will be shake because Wall Street is right behind us. And that will be very hard to be tackle on this mayor, right? And the City Council, right? Yes! We are for time being, we are closing today and we'll be come back, we'll be surrounded. Thank you so much. This is Mohamed Tipus Sultan from New York Taxi Worker Alliance.
We'll be back! We'll be back!
We'll be back!
We'll be back!
We'll be back!
Till when? Till when? Till we get justice? Justice!
Now!
Justice!
Now!
Justice!
Now!
Justice!
Now!
We'll be back!
We will back!
All right, folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you.